Good evening, the time is seven thirty, October twenty eighth, two thousand twenty five. I would like to call to order the October twenty eighth meeting of the Cowan Council. If you'll please write and join me in pledging allegiance to our mission flag. Thank you. Look, if you please call the roll.
Mr. Goldstein?
Yeah.
Mr. Lopez?
Here.
Mrs. Jilsky-Eichner?
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Ayers?
Chairman?
Mr. Sead?
President.
Mr. Wiggins? Ms. Young?
Here.
Ms. Edie?
Here.
Ms. Winterstrand?
Here.
Ms. Dunn?
Here.
Mr. Sutton?
President.
Mr. Frere? Ms. Shanahan?
Here.
Mr. Wiggins? Mr. Frere? We have twelve in attendance, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting about October fourteenth, two thousand twenty five. So I have a motion. Ms. Winterstrand? Any comment or any corrections, deletion? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the minutes as submitted? Opposed?
Abstained.
Abstained.
Extention, Ms. Ayers abstains?
And Shanahan.
And so does Ms. Shanahan. So, yeah. Ten and two. Okay, next item on the agenda, public participation. Do we have anybody that wishes to address the council? Nobody in chambers? So I don't know if there's anybody online that wishes to address the council.
Diane Cece?
Okay, Ms. Cece?
Good.
You have the floor?
Good evening, can you hear me?
We can.
Good evening, and so all of you, the mayor and the council members and staff as well. Just a little while ago, I sent, I think, all of you, or I tried to send all of you an email regarding the comments I'm about to make, but I'm not sure if it reached everyone, so I'm going to read my statement into the public record if that's okay with you. Diane Cece Olmstead Place, and I'm speaking on behalf of myself as a private resident. First, I want to say that I have never appeared before the council, and I think my twenty years of interacting with government to actually either oppose an appointment to a commission or to ask for one to be reconsidered and tabled, but I'm here before you tonight to do just that. Tonight you're putting forward the appointment as an alternate on the Planning and Zoning Commission, Mr. Hubers. And I want to say that I appreciate and applaud, and truly am grateful for anyone who steps up as volunteer for public service. And this is not anything having to do personally with Mr. Hubers, who I've never met, but more rather with the process. I'm concerned that this is on your agenda tonight as an appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission, one of the most important ones we have where decisions are made that are not just far-reaching but also long-lasting implications. In terms of process, I want to point out that the public was provided with inadequate notice of this candidate. The meeting agenda was not posted on the regular meeting notice page that we all go to in the public until Sunday, and the actual resume for the qualifications of this person was not actually posted for the public until yesterday on Monday at twelve thirty. I also understand that it's possible that some of your council members also did not have access to it and were unable to adequately vet this candidate. And then based on that resume itself, I would suggest that there's limited relative experience or relevant experience. And although the city doesn't have specific requirement for our land use commissions, I would, you know, submit to you that we should be seeking out candidates that bring some experience in land use or some relevant field and also who have lived in Norwalk and understand how these things operate. Which brings me to another point, a complete lack of familiarity with Norwalk, although some of these things may be transferable. It's my understanding that this candidate
Thirty seconds remaining.
To the city. And in fact, had not, at the time of the application, had to be informed by city clerk, Ms. Dixon, that he would be required to register to vote in order to be a candidate, on which he hadn't done and only recently did on August fifth. And then the timing of this appointment is most concerning as well. It's literally the eleventh hour, the week before Election Day. I think that you could
Three minutes.
Consider, you know, why we're putting people on to boards as important as planning and zoning when there could be a changing of the guards next week. Or at least, you know, it'd be, I don't want to say saddling a future administration, but this is an appointment that's going to then be in effect until January of two thousand twenty seven. And as most of you know, a planning and zoning alternate is often then becomes a planning and zoning regular commission member upon a vacancy there.
Three minutes and thirty seconds.
Oh, I'm sorry, so let me just close by saying that my request originally today, and it continues to be, that you reconsider this submission, and I'm asking that is either Mr. Hubers withdraw his name himself or that the mayor do so, and in the absence of that, that at the very least that you table this item and leave this position open so it can be reconsidered for all the reasons I just stated, and thank you.
Cece, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Are there any other members of the public wishing to address the council?
Elania Zuniga?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members and city staff, my name is Eliana Suniga. I live at a running Brooklyn here in Norwalk. I'm here tonight to respectfully request that you table or vote no on mayor's nomination of Mr. Hubert for appointment as the alternate to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Norwalk residents have been incredibly vocal about their concerns regarding development and overdevelopment. Every member who serves in this commission plays a crucial role in representing those voices and protecting the character of our community. Given the significance of the zoning decisions, planning of zoning decisions, and how long their impact lasts, it's critical the appointees are selected with care, transparency, and full public confidence. I believe in good governance and accountability, and I urge you to table or postpone any vote, especially now during an election cycle where the citizens of Norwalk are watching closely. We're looking to our current elected officials as we cast our votes to reelect or elect some of you to demonstrate real transparency and responsibility in how appointments are handled. As Ms. Cece said, I won't repeat again what she said in terms of the timing and the agenda. I will second, however, the lack of familiarity with Norwalk. He just, Mr. Hubert recently moved here, he has never voted here and registered just in August to be advised. He was required to be appointed, that raises a real concern for somebody serving on a body that shapes how our city will grow and develop in the next years. Finally, this nomination comes from an outgoing administration and a council that will change next week. Yet the appointment would run until two thousand twenty seven. It would be more appropriate to let the incoming administration participate in these decisions and restore public confidence in the process. For all those reasons, transparency, timing, and local understanding, I respectfully urge you to table or vote no on Mr. Hubert's appointment tonight. Thank you all for everything you do for our city.
Thank you. Are there any other persons wishing to address the council?
Anna Tabetnik?
Hi, thank you, my name is Anna Tabashnik, I'm for Gilbert Street in Norwalk. And disclosure, I'm a current alternate Planning and Zoning Commission member, I'm speaking in my personal capacity only, and I wanted to comment on the agenda item related to residential parking permits. I wanted to comment last week at ordinance, but I was ill. And I just wanted to ask you to please approve this ordinance. But also to please keep in mind and pass on and make sure that it it's part of the culture when discussing this with the Parking Authority and TMP, that these residential parking permits are needed, not just for people who don't live in the neighborhood, but to manage the overall parking spaces, whether people live here or not, they can't see you. You don't need to wave, okay, sorry, that was my daughter. And to make sure that the process to to get a street or an area of streets approved for RPP involves more than just petitioning, so I was looking at some recent cities. It should be possible for TMP to sort of propose streets based on complaints and what they've heard for council members to propose streets, it shouldn't just be by petition. And I have lots of other thoughts, but thank you for your time, and thank you for continuing to move this idea forward.
Thank you. James, anybody else?
There are none, Mr. Mayor.
We'll move on to appointments and resignations and appointments. The first one is John Cassano for the Historical Commission, do I have a motion?
Yeah, John.
John Sutton?
John, yep. Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'd like to nominate and speak to the candidacy of John Cassano for the Historical Commission.
Any discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. John Cassano is a resident at twenty-nine Poplar Street here in Norwalk. His resume, his education, development, training, affiliations, his professionalism, volunteerism are varied, quite extensive, and very impactful. Some examples are as follows. His recent professional experience, Mr. Cassano is system advisor, where he is a principal advisor here in Norwalk, Connecticut. He co-creates mutual learning relationships with organizations and groups as they navigate this century's interdependent challenges. His work encompasses dialogic processes, core values, value wayfinding, and community engagement. Some of his more recent clients, theater work in New Milford, the Palace Theater, Arts and Culture Collaborative in Waterbury, Mary and Eliza Freeman's Center for History and Community, Fairfield Arts Commission, Western Connecticut State University, where he designed and conducted online classes, Stanford Arts and Culture Commission. He's also community engagement and equities strategies consultant with the Cultural Alliance of Fairfield County here in Norwalk, where he, it's a part of the cultural action for equity, the Cultural Connected Network. Co-developed of a regional social infrastructure strategy. Some of his past experiences, Connecticut Office of the Arts, Hartford, Connecticut, where he was the Community Development Coordinator of the CDC, providing grants and professional development services to nonprofits and municipal local art agencies. They also dealt with inaugurated and developed a statewide network of cultural service organizations, led the design of outcome-based grant programs emphasizing community relevance and collaboration. Was an advisor to the New England Regional Summit and managed statewide economic impact studies. Mr. Cassano was Executive Director of Farmington Valley Arts Center in Avon, Connecticut, where he led the organization of restructure, he expanded the programming there as well. Was also affiliated with Bridgeport Artisan Center, where he was a general manager. Other and present professional affiliations, Connecticut Civic Ambassador, Everyday Democracy, the University for the Third Horizons in Scotland. This is a mutually supportive international community of practice to develop regenerative responses to global issues. Is also affiliated with, he was the National Chair, Community Development Coordinator. His volunteerism is on the Board of Directors, as well as a board president of Compass Youth Collaborative in Hartford, Connecticut. A co-founder, founder of Sono Arts in South Norwalk, a free celebration of urban visual and performing arts festival. His ongoing professional development and education, a Stanford Social Innovation Review, Future Stewards and Lenders Quest, as well as Meridian University in Petaluma, California. He's involved with the Community Leadership Program, New Haven, Connecticut, where he specialized in the William Gaspar, Vardette, Stein, Moria Fund, the Connecticut Undoing Racism, Bridgeport and Stanford, Connecticut, established in anti-racism training and workshops. Also the James P. Shanna Leadership Institute, worked with the Amherst H. Wilder Foundation. And to top all of that off,
if you can.
Mr. Cassano graduated from the University of Bridgeport, where he received a Bachelor of Science degree in industrial design, college of engineering. And we all know that the University of Bridgeport is an educational beacon located along Island Sound. He then went on to get a graduate degree from the Graduate Institute, Bethany, Connecticut, where he received a Master of Art in the Conscious Study. Thus, I wholeheartedly endorse.
Well, thank you, Mr. Cassano. Are there any other comments? Ms. Dunn?
I know, and it won't be that long. But as you know, I was the one who encouraged John to get involved again. I knew John, he was one of the handful of artists that back when a lot of people weren't residents or involved in Sono. What is Sono now? It used to be South Norwalk, a place that I was not actually allowed to go. He was one of four or five artists that got space there because it was cheap and, you know, it's where they could work. One weekend, they decided to pull their artwork out on the street and set it up and try to sell their work, and that was the foundations of the Sono Arts Celebration forty-five years ago. So that's how I got to know John, and he's someone that I absolutely admired. It was, it's really interesting that he then got stolen by the state to move up to the Connecticut Tourism, Arts Tourism and Culture Commission, where he worked, and his job was to really help nonprofit boards, especially in the arts, to make them more functional. So he's a really amazing skill set that I think will be really helpful, but he really loves history, so that's something that he really wanted to get involved in. So I was really thrilled when he moved back, I think, about four years ago to Norwalk, and it's great that he and his wife are here and going to be engaged, and so John and Morgan, it's exciting to have them here, and it'll be great for the city of Norwalk.
Thank you, any further comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Extentions, motion carries unanimously, thank you. Next, we have two appointments to the Conservation Commission as, well, we have one as a regular member, so let's do that one first. Ms. Devon Healy for Conservation Commission, Ms. Shanahan?
Great. I'm pleased to move the nomination of Devon Healy as a member of the Conservation Commission. Sometimes a resume comes across the transom that perfectly captures the background needed for, to be an effective commission member, and this is truly the case for Ms. Healy. She's currently an environmental analyst for the town of Greenwich in their Environmental Affairs Department. Previously, she was in environmental science for HDR in White Plains, where they undertake compliance and natural resource projects related to water resources and development projects. She's also worked for Harbor Watch as a science operations coordinator, collecting data, doing lab work, and coordinating volunteers in education. And she also spent time working at the Maritime Aquarium as a marine science educator. Wow, sounds just right for this job. So Ms. Healy, I think, will be a huge resource and a benefit for our commission, and we're grateful for her willingness to serve the city.
Further comment or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Extentions, motion carries unanimously. Now we have Elise Allen.
I've got that one too.
I'm sorry?
That's okay.
As a Conservation Commission alternate.
It's truly my pleasure to move the nomination of Elise Allen to the alternate member of the Conservation Commission. I've gotten to know Elise very well over the last two years, we've worked closely together with the Norwalk River Watershed Association in championing the Meadow Street microforest. She's highly organized, she's diligent in her follow-up, she's passionate about her work. One thing I think that struck several of us on her resume is her self-description, that she's a Swiss Army knife, a professional, and that she can create, create and manage while facilitating an effective work environment. We just love that Swiss Army knife idea. So her work with the Norwalk River Watershed Association will certainly give her insight into some of the important issues that come up before the Conservation Commission, making her an effective member on day one. And one of the other things that pleases me most about Elise's nomination is that she's a Norwalk native. She attended and graduated the Norwalk High School in two thousand twenty. She graduated Summa Collati from Fairfield U in two thousand twenty-four. So it's really heartwarming to find some young people who are willing to donate their time to Norwalk, and really pleased that somebody of this age and ability is going to help us, so very excited to forward this nomination.
Thank you, further discussion or comment? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Extentions, and motion carries unanimously. Now it's Anthony Samari for the Zoning Board of Appeals, do I have a motion? Ms. Winterstrand?
Thank you, Mayor, I'd like to move Mr. Anthony Samari to an appointment to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Mr. Samari has lived in the Cranberry section of Norwalk since two thousand nine, and his wife, Yvonne, also serves the people of Norwalk as co-vice chair on the Commission for Gender Equity. As a New York commercial real estate attorney, Mr. Samari is well-versed in urban planning. He has argued for variances before the Yonkers Zoning Board on a number of matters, both use and area variances. He has stated specifically that he should not have a conflict with any petitions before the board because he is only admitted in the state of New York. So there's no conflict with Connecticut. He also served on the Darien Zoning Board from two thousand eight until he relocated to Norwalk. I think he'll be an excellent addition to Norwalk Zoning Board of Appeals, and I thank him for his service.
Further comment or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Extentions, which carries unanimously. Now that brings us to John Hubers, the Planning and Zoning Commission alternate, do I have a motion?
Yeah.
Mr. Goldstein?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate, move Mr. Hubers' nomination as an alternate on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Mr. Hubers is a new resident in Norwalk, but he is someone who has already shown dedication to these issues. As I understand it, he has been a regular attendee of Planning and Zoning Commission meetings. He also, when he applied for this appointment, he spoke with a number of people at the city, including the Director of Economic and Community Development for an extended period of time. I also know that he's also reached out to members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I've had conversations with them about Mr. Hubers, all of which were favorable. Mr. Hubers professionally, and I don't know him personally, but professionally, actually has a really interesting job, where he consults nonprofits on the business side and teach them how to do the business part well, so that they can focus on doing the good work that they actually want to do. He's deeply experienced, he's also a renter, which is a pretty rare thing, rare thing to have on the Planning and Zoning Commission. And just a note, just sort of just personal perspective on this. I was nominated to the Zoning Commission when I had lived in Norwalk for not a lot of time, and the thought, and I was nominated by Mayor Riley, and I was grateful for that. And you know what happened? I got on the Planning and Zoning Commission as an alternate, and I learned. And I really dug in and learned a lot about this community, and it helped me fall in love with this community even more so, and that's why I'm, the reason why I'm sitting here today. It is, anyone who steps up to serve and someone who's obviously qualified like Mr. Hubers, I think that should be commented. I understand the concerns about making decisions despite the fact that they haven't been here for a long time, but one thing that I've learned about boards and commissions is that having a variety of different perspectives when it comes to diversity in all respects, race, age, educational background, professional background, makes us all better. And having a fresh perspective can sometimes really enhance and be a real asset in making really important decisions. I would also note that this person is being nominated as an alternate and would not have a vote if there was a contested vote with the Planning and Zoning Commission. In my opinion, I see no reason why this guy shouldn't serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission as an alternate, I think he seems like a suitable candidate, and I will be voting in support.
Thank you, further discussion or comment? Ms. Jilsky-Eichner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate the background from Mr. Goldstein, I think it's actually very helpful to have. You know, I think it's particularly important to understand that this is someone who has been deeply engaged in the commission meetings already, you know, I think it shows a great deal when someone actually shows up and attends and really listens to the meetings, and I think we benefit from having more people like that. I will also note to the point that Mr. Goldstein just made, there's actually been a study done of specifically Connecticut's boards and zoning boards and highlighting a particular lack of renters on those boards and the ways in which that can actually be detrimental to developing sound zoning policy that recognizes the needs of renters as well. And so I actually appreciate the opportunity to have someone step up who has that experience in Norwalk at this moment, I think that could be very valuable for the commission.
Thank you, any further comment or discussion, Ms. Dunn?
I think, based on all of the comments from the public and the concerns over lack of transparency, I usually do my due diligence by investigating people and where they stand and making sure that they are offered, do offer a wide range of perspectives. And that didn't happen here, we just got this, I think, Sunday night, Diane said, but Saturday it wasn't there when I looked. So I haven't had enough time, so for me, it's not very transparent, so I'm going to be a no vote.
Further comment or discussion? Is it? Mr. Lopez? Is it possible to make a motion to table this? You can make the motion, and then there's no motion. Once you make a motion to table, there's no debate, and we take a vote immediately, and then whatever the vote is, we move forward from there. Okay, yeah, because I mean, I guess my only concern is, well, hearing some of the comments and kind of looking at the gentleman's resume, you know, he is a renter, but I don't see anything really that is related to planning and zoning, other than that he's a renter. And his background is more in the consulting or business aspect of it, so that's, 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 that's why I'm kind of leaning toward possibly. Well, you either make the motion or you don't. Well, I'd like to hear from rest of my colleagues. I'm sorry?
You make the motion.
Well, no, he's saying
No, no, I'm going to your vein, rest of my colleagues.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, it's, it's, now we go, if you finish with your comments, we ask for other comments. Yes.
Yeah.
Any further discussion?
I just want to say
Ms. Edie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just, just wanted to step back as well, I just agree with the comments of John.
Ms. Cece?
Just to my point, I think council member and Jilsky-Eichner mentioned it, I think it's important that we add a renter to these processes. A lot of times, in recent, we talk about renters, that it's like they're not citizens of our city, but they are, an important citizen, and I think that they should be a part of the planning and zoning in our city. I think this is a nice gateway to start as an alternate, where there's a vote, like councilman Councilman Goldstein? I'm sorry. Councilman Goldstein said, I think that is important, that we get these people involved, and renters need to be involved, I don't really see that as a point. So I'm going to be supporting it, I would support a table.
Ms. Smith?
Yeah, I will say, I've been back and forth quite a bit, just
Yeah, I will say I've been back and forth quite a bit just in these last 10 minutes. I mean, I did do my due diligence and I did follow up. I spoke with Chapin Bryce, who now has recently been named the Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission, who interviewed him and also with Jay Hibansky, who felt particularly good about this appointment. But the one part that I was, that I did not have is that he's a renter. And that is very influential to me. And I do think it's important that we have that perspective. So while I've gone back and forth and just a few minutes ago, I was like, hmm, I think maybe we might want to consider tabling. I think that I have come to the place where I will support this appointment.
Any further discussion, Ms. Ayers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can I just make a point about our process? Because that was brought up. I believe one of the public participants stated that we should stop working, we should not be doing our job, we should not be voting because the election is next week. And even though I think we all encourage everyone to vote, it is our duty to do our job until the last day. And so our charter, our ordinances allow us, I believe we talked about it in caucus last night, this is the last time before the election. So we are really, I just want that to be in public record, that we are in line in step with our charter and our ordinances outlined, and we are not doing anything out of the ordinary, irregardless of what next Tuesday is to bring. We are committed to do our job till the last day. And I think I don't want the public to get a perception that we are just sitting here laying down and waiting to next Tuesday. No, all 15 of us are working until the day is done, and I think that's important to raise at this time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Ayers. Further comment or discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
This is the nomination.
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, we have Ms. Dunn is opposed, Ms. Edie and Ms. Ayers are abstaining. Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is Elizabeth Syle for the.
Hey, Mayor, I wanted to abstain for that. I'm sorry, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see your hands. Yes, he's, yeah, Dewan did. So you're abstaining, Dewan?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wiggins, I'm sorry. So you're abstaining, okay. So that is abstentions with three abstentions and one no vote. Okay, now the next item is Elizabeth Syle for the Bike Walk Commission. Do I have a motion?
I think it's me again.
Mr. Goldstein?
Thank you. Ms. Syle has a variety of interesting experiences, especially in the nonprofit and communication sector. She's currently the Director of Content with the Breast Cancer Research Foundation and has previous experience, both, you know, in the communication space, but also in the nonprofit space. She is a graduate of Vithica College, which is only relevant because it's where my dad went and the brother-in-law, and I got a lot of family up there. So, you know, that's a nice thing. But I, she is someone who I have learned, even though I don't know her personally, is someone who I think would bring a valuable perspective in addition to the bike commission.
Thank you. Further discussion or comment? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. That brings us to reappointments. Ms. Seed is about to recuse himself and relieve the chambers. We have two reappointments to the Fair Housing Advisory Commission. We can move them as a unit if we have a motion.
Unbelievably, it's me again. So, you know, I'd like to move the nominations Jalen Seed and Carol Frank. Carol Frank is someone who's been involved in our, in Norwalk Service and Boards and Commissions for a long time, including the Redevelopment Agency, the Norwalk Housing Partnership, the Chamber of Commerce. There are million clubs and organizations that she has dedicated a lot of time to, and of course, including the Fair Housing Commission, Advisory Commission. She's someone who is well-known around here and is someone who's going to provide, continue to provide a valuable perspective. Jalen Seed, I don't know if any one of us have actually heard of him before. He's a relative newcomer. You know, Diane, I don't know if you commented about how long he's lived in Norwalk. I've heard he's lived in Norwalk all his life. He is someone who has served in about 75 different public positions around here. Jalen is our dear colleague and our friend. And he is someone who's done a really great job as Chair in the Fair Housing Advisory Commission and someone who has helped work with our new Fair Housing Officer. Whose name? Sabrina Roman, who has done an excellent job paving the ground running. The work of the Fair Housing Officer and Commission is really important, especially when housing is one of the most central issues we deal with on a daily basis. And I wholeheartedly support the reappointments of Carol Frank and our friend Jalen Seed to the Fair Housing Advisory Commission.
Thank you. Further comment or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed?
Thank you, Tom.
Abstentions? Jason, Jalen, can you come back in?
Where's Dewan? Did he? Probably.
It's like an Avic Lasalle. Running across. Next item is the reappointment, Charles Piro to the Pension Board, and it looks here that this is subject to the approval of the proposed amendments to Chapter 126.
That's it.
Okay, so do I have a motion? Ms. Shanahan?
Okay, so Charles Piro has lived and worked in Norwalk for more than 40 years. In fact, he both grew up and attended college in Connecticut, so I think he spent most of his life here in the state. After graduating law school, Mr. Piro built a law practice representing people seeking social security and retirement benefits at all administrative level and in the federal courts. This practice has given him a deep knowledge of employment and pension law. He sat on our pension board for more years than we can count and is considered a huge asset by his peers. I reached out to his fellow board members for some insight into his contributions to the board, and here are a few of their comments. Charlie has a deep knowledge of the pension system. He's very dedicated and always wants to get to the right answer, particularly when it relates to the granting of a pension. Charlie's an attorney who has years of experience in social security law. He has a very good understanding of Robert Rules of Order and meeting procedures. He helps ensure our meetings are conducted properly and meet our legal requirements. He's always reviews the materials in advance. He's very thorough in his comments, and he's a very valuable member of this board. So he's endorsed by his colleagues, and I am happy to forward his nomination.
Any further comments or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, that closes nominations and appointments. Now we have some remarks. I have a very important first remark that I want to make because a lot of concerns regarding federal government benefits. And we have something here. Because of the ongoing federal shutdown, SNAP food assistance benefits will be affected starting November 1st. By the way, we're going to post this on our website. Here is what Norwalk residents need to know during the federal government shutdown. If you already have SNAP funds on your EBT card, you can still use them after November 1st. No new SNAP benefits will be added to EBT cards until the federal government reopens. You can still apply for SNAP. Applications will be processed and benefits will appear once the shutdown ends. If you or someone else you know is in need of food, visit the Norwalk Local Food Access Guide for a list of food pantries and meal programs in our community. You can find the list by visiting our website at norwalkct.gov backslash meals or on social media. For more immediate help, you can contact your Community Resource Hub at City Hall or our partners at Alliance for Community Empowerment. Their information is on the website and on our website and social media. We will continue sharing information as it becomes available from the state. Next, Halloween Nightfare. I don't know if anybody was able to go to the Halloween Nightfare down in Soto the other day, last weekend. I attended and it was very impressive. And there were so many families out there. I went in the afternoon session. I didn't dress up and go in the evening session, but it was absolutely just remarkable. I've gotten so many positive feedback, so much positive feedback from members of the community. I went out to eat at the restaurant on Sunday night. And people were just coming up to me and saying they attended. Other people who didn't attend were saying, oh my goodness, I didn't even know about it. I'm going to go next year. So it was just absolutely amazing. I want to thank our community development team and our economically community development team for putting this together and our police department for making sure that night went smoothly. Our vendors who participated, we invite all the restaurants down there to participate and be a part of it. The Halloween Nightfare is designed to celebrate local businesses, strengthen community connections, and bring residents and visitors together. The estimate based on data that the DECD is working towards is about 6,000 attendees throughout the entire day. Just absolutely remarkable. I'm sure it helped the Norwalk economy quite a bit. And it introduces people to Norwalk, lets them know what we're all about. So again, thank you for that and early voting. As a reminder, early voting for Norwalk's municipal election is underway in the Norwalk City Hall Community Room ahead of Election Day next Tuesday, November 4th. Early voting is every day until Sunday, November 2nd, from 10 a.m. to 6 p.m. with special extended hours today, which already over, maybe not yet. And Thursday, October 30th, from 8 a.m. to 8 p.m. I just have a little side comment on that. And you've heard me preach this sermon before. We have 50,000 registered voters in Norwalk for their ballots. The most I've ever seen come out for a municipal election was a little over 17,000. In one year, we had about 13,400 residents out of 50,000 registered voters come out to vote in a municipal election, an election that is more important to you on a daily basis than any of the other elections. We levy taxes. We fund your schools, we fund your Board of Education. We keep your parks up to, we modernize your parks, we plow your streets, we put your sidewalks in. We do so much that impacts the local residents. And it's just to me, I'll say it, it's a bit unsettling when I see so few people come out to vote in a municipal election. And please, I hope that we get more people coming out this year. It's a critical local election. We don't talk about who to vote for, that's your choice, but come out and vote. There's so many people that gave their lives, went back to the Revolutionary War, that gave us the right to vote, deformed our democracy. So just, just a word, I hope that we get people that come out and vote in this election because it is a critical local election and it has greater impact on the average person than any of the other levels of government. Now I'll get off my soapbox. Hospital Neighborhood Streetscape Improvement Project. I don't know if you've had a chance to go up and take a look at the top of Stevens Street? If you haven't, go up and take a look. The neighbors are thrilled, the businesses are thrilled. I want to thank Jim Travers and our TMP team for what they did up there. I want to thank the design people that designed it. It's really quite remarkable. It's going to make it a lot safer. It's going to make neighbors a lot more pleasant, and it increased parking up there by about 20 cars. So it's really well done. So I want to, again, it was an effort made possible in part thanks to an $800,000 grant the city received from ComDOT. And the city also put in over a million dollars in funding. And I want to thank the Common Council for supporting and funding this project. The new and pro-streetscape design has enhanced parking facilities, increased safety for all modes of transportation. So if you haven't seen it, go take a look. It's really nice. Sustainable Connecticut's Gold Certification. I'm proud to share that the city has been recognized for achieving Sustainable Connecticut's Gold Certification, the highest level of recognition for sustainability at the municipal levels, paving the way to meet our goal of becoming the greenest city in the state of Connecticut. And I appreciate the alignment we have on this council for doing the same thing, making us the greenest state, city in the state of Connecticut. City met high standards in a broad range of sustainability access to qualify for the prestigious gold level certification. The city has also awarded the Climate Leader Designation after completing a specific suite of actions intended to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and prepare for the impacts of climate change. Today, we had the award ceremony, and I want to thank Jody Tredler, our new Director of Sustainability and Resilience, who's done a remarkable job in a very short time that she's been here. So Jody, if you're listening, thank you very much and helping us achieve that. Next, Norwalk's Fifth Annual Keep Kids Safe Connecticut Statewide Gun Buyback Program, Gun Safe Giveaway Day. Want to remind everyone that this Saturday, November 1st, from 10 to 1, is our Fifth Annual Keep Kids Safe Connecticut Statewide Gun Buyback and Gun Safe Giveaway Day at some outpost at police headquarters. The voluntary gun buyback program is for safe firearm storage. It encourages people, if they're having a firearm, to keep it safe in a safe location. The event offers gun owners the opportunity to safely remove their unwanted weapons. Some people just have weapons lying around that have been in the house for many, many years, and they don't know what to do with it. Well, here's what you can do. We'll buy it from you. And I want to thank the Newtown Action Alliance, the Newtown Action Alliance Foundation, and the Wilton Quaker Organization for partnering with us on this event. Last but not least, I want to give a shout out to our Norwalk Police Department who is going through the national accreditation process. This week, the assessors are on site interviewing and reviewing all the policies and procedures that the Norwalk Police Department has in place. They'll be interviewing people. I will be interviewed, I believe, Wednesday, tomorrow, I believe. But I'm proud to say that the Norwalk Police Department has been nationally accredited since 1995. We have met another gold standard of accreditation. We've been raised to the highest level. To be accredited, to gain initial accreditation is a growing process, but it's relatively smooth process. The reaccreditation process, by the way, is where the difficulty comes in because you have to have all the documentation of what you've done over the previous three or five years, depending on the length of the recertification process. And I give a shout out to our Norwalk Police Department, our chief, our, all the officers who abide by the national, these are the highest standards of law enforcement delivery services, and it's been by the National it's certified by the National Organization of Black Enforcement Executives, the Police Executive Research Forum, the National Sheriff's Association, and the International Association of Youth and Leaguers, all combined to put together this process. So again, shout out to our Norwalk Police Department. And with that, I'll turn the consent calendar over to our council president.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one very special announcement tonight. And that is to congratulate Councilmember Johan Lopez and his partner Lydia on the birth of their daughter Ava. You know, you kept that hidden from us for quite a long time. Surprised us all with a group, massive group's text message. Quite some time has gone by. It was, you know, during a pretty crazy time here in the city, and we've had a lot going on here in the council, so we didn't acknowledge it when we should have. And so please remind us the day of your beautiful daughter's birth.
August 22nd, 7:00 p.m.
Just missed being a Leo.
Yeah, no, I think she actually.
Is she on the cusp?
She's on the cusp. But thank you so much. Everyone thinks you're a good man. It means a lot. Thank you.
Yeah, and I know you're feeling pretty tired these days.
It's getting better.
Another Norwalk citizen.
Wonderful, wonderful. Anyway, we have something for you after the meeting.
Thank you so much.
Okay, and with that, I will turn the consent calendar over to Councilmember Nadja Skey.
Thank you very much, President. Today's consent calendar begins with 7:00 a.m. Approved changes to Chapter 126, Pension Plans, Sections 126.1, 126.2, 126.3, 126. one twenty-six three, one twenty-six four, one twenty-six five, and one twenty-six six. Two, approved changes to Chapter eighty-four Retirement Benefits, Article One, Post-Employment Benefits Trust, Sections eighty-four two and eighty-four three. Three, approved changes to Chapter one twelve Trees, Section one twelve one, one twelve two, one twelve three, one twelve four, one twelve five, one twelve six, one twelve seven, one twelve eight, one twelve nine, one twelve ten, one twelve eleven, one twelve twelve, one twelve thirteen, fourteen, and one twelve fifteen. B, ones, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to enter into an agreement for the use of calf pasture beach and immediate surrounding grounds by City of Norwalk Recreation and Parks for their Jingle Bell Five K to be held on Saturday, December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, from eight A M. to eleven A M., approximately two hundred people. Authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to enter into an agreement for the use of Washington Street Park and immediate surrounding grounds by City of Norwalk Department of Economic and Community Development for their holiday extravaganza to be held on Saturday, December sixth, two thousand and twenty-five, from one P M. to nine P M. Set up time by nine A M. with tear down by ten P M., approximately fifteen hundred people. Three, approve the use of Veterans Park and immediate surrounding grounds by Norwalk Public Schools and City of Norwalk Department of Recreation and Parks for their thirty-fourth annual Norwalk River Fun Run to be held on Saturday, December sixth, two thousand and twenty-five, from ten A M. to eleven A M. Rain date of Sunday, December seventh. Set up time by nine A M. Saturdays was tear down by eleven thirty A M., approximately three hundred and fifty people. C, one, A, authorize Mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute any and all documents and agreements necessary to accept grant funding under the Connecticut Department of Transportation Highway Safety, F Y twenty-six, D U I Enforcement Grant, Project Number zero two zero six, zero seven two two dash one dash B D. B, authorize Chief of Police James Walsh to execute any and all documents and agreements as may be necessary to implement the Connecticut Department of Transportation Highway Safety, F Y twenty-six, D U I Enforcement Grant, Project Number zero two zero six dash zero seven two two dash one dash B D. Two, A, authorize Mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute any and all documents and agreements necessary to accept grant funding under the Connecticut Department of Transportation Highway Safety Projects named N W K one zero one zero three dash C one zero T dash two zero twenty-six, twenty-six dash thirty-six, click it or ticket, C I O T Enforcement Grant. B, authorize Chief of Police James Walsh to execute any and all documents and agreements as may be necessary to implement the Connecticut Department of Transportation Highway Safety, Safety Projects named N W K one zero one zero three dash C I zero T dash two thousand and twenty-six dash thirty-six, click it or ticket, C I O T Enforcement Grant. D, one, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute a master agreement for construction services with Colonial Concrete and Asphalt Paving L L C for a sum not to exceed three hundred and eighty-one thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars. Two, authorize the Director of Transportation Mobility and Parking to execute orders on the contract with Colonial Concrete and Asphalt Paving L L C for a sum not to exceed seventy-six thousand three hundred and twelve dollars. Three, authorize the Director of Transportation Mobility and Parking to execute a purchase order for design and permitting services with I M E G. Formerly F H I Studio, for a sum not to exceed ninety thousand five hundred dollars. Four, authorize the Director of Transportation Mobility and Parking to execute orders on the agreement with I M E G. Formerly F H I Studio, for a sum not to exceed nine thousand and fifty dollars. President, that concludes our meeting. I think that's-
Thank you very much, Councilmember Nadaltski. Very well read. I will now call for the vote on the consent calendar as read. All in favor, please raise your hand. Close. Abstentions, and that carries you next.
Okay, that brings us to item seven A four, Ms. Shannon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to move item number four, approve new ordinance residential parking permit program. And I might speak to it as well, Mr. Mayor.
You have the floor.
Thank you. There's been widespread community demand for residential parking programs to address the concerns of neighborhoods that struggle with non-resident parking on their streets due to local attractions such as parks and beaches and train stations in Norwalk. Jim Travers and his team came to our ordinance committee asking that we provide neighboring legislation to empower our parking authority to create a parking permit program to address these concerns. Essentially, this ordinance is just to empower the parking authority to prepare guidelines and standards to establish the process and requirements for the residential parking permit program. This ordinance does not lay out any standards or guidelines for the program at this time. That work is left to the experts at the parking authority. The creation of this program will be subject to rigorous public engagement, both at parking authority meetings as well as when this program is brought back to the Common Council to consider it. In addition to the usual public outreach and public meetings that are involved in creating a new public program, the ordinance specifically identifies a thirty-day public comment program when the parking authority will present its first draft of the guidelines. And then there will be a second thirty-day public comment period after the program is revised to reflect the first set of comments to the program. After this process is completed, this council will then vote either to approve or disapprove the revised guidelines at one time. There are many parking and traffic issues we're trying to address in Norwalk. It's one of our biggest issues. This residential parking program only addresses one aspect of these buried, buried concerns. And it's not a panacea for other concerns such as abandoned cars, illegal apartments, speeding issues, and the heavy traffic that we all suffer through. However, this program will address the concerns that some residential neighborhoods have that non-residents are taking the spaces on their home streets. Jim Travers, Chief of Transportation Mobility and Parking, is here to answer any questions that Common Council members might have. And thank you, Jim, for joining us and waiting through the poll meeting. We really appreciate it.
No problem.
Welcome any Common Council members or the mayor to ask any questions they might have about the program.
Are there any questions for Mr. Travers or any questions about the program or any further comments? Miss Young?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So Ms. Shannon, Hannah and I, and actually Josh, we've had a conversation. And I, and I know, Jim, I've mentioned my frustration with you about parking and, and particularly in South Norwalk, the district that I represent. And so a lot of you know the parking woes that we deal with in South. You know, being one of the oldest, you know, areas of the city, narrow streets and the like, and, and a lot of people living in the area. We're not talking about residents. We're talking about the amount of cars. And not only do we have the cars, and I'm just putting it out here, and I hope that this, this permit program will get to the point that we address this sooner rather than later. Because we have so many residents, you have cars that are not working and abandoned on the street that are owned by residents. And so what concerned me the most was the non-resident designation. And so what did that mean as far as implementation and enforcement with this particular ordinance? And the other thing that I kind of think is missing, and I'd love for us to address as well, and I hope that this happens, is that we have commercial vehicles that are not just in District B. I've seen them across the city. I, I, I know folks who live in District A, that I talk about certain streets that are very over consumed with commercial vehicles. And so I think that as well is a quality of life issue that needs to be addressed sooner rather than later. And so I'm hoping that when we get to the point of actually putting this, this plan into action, that we are addressing that and that is incorporated into this permitting process moving forward. Don't know how we're gonna do it, but I think it warrants, it warrants a conversation, and it should not be something that's two or three years down the road. South Norwalk and other areas of the city have just been inundated with that type of vehicular vehicles on the street. So, but I, I feel like just hearing you and having this conversation and, and ensuring that this is just the first step, but that we are going to have a chance to add to it in a way that is going to be meaningful and not just for a certain segment thus far. I think it needs to be a lot more comprehensive. And so with that, knowing that and hoping that that is, is what's gonna happen, and if I'm still on the council or not, I'm going to be as boisterous to make sure that it does happen because it, 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 it really is a quality of life issue.
And just to follow up on Darlene's comments, one of the things we did talk about, and we are looking at ordinance committee, and right now we're just doing some additional research, is long-term parking and abandoned vehicles. That's a separate ordinance. That's not covered under the residential parking ordinance, and Jim might want to speak to that, but there are several different types of things that could be addressed with different ordinances. This one is primarily about, and when I say non-residents in the ordinance, we're really talking about people who don't live on the street or are parking there because maybe they're going to the beach, or maybe they're going to the train station, things like that. So that's what this ordinance is addressing, but there are other matters that also need to be addressed, probably with different ordinances. Jim, did you want to-
But my question and my concern about that is, is that this is very limited. But we've been dealing with this other issue for decades. And so that should take priority as well. And so I'm just hoping that it's not something that two, three, four years down the road that we are addressing, that we take the same measures that we're doing right now to address those types of issues.
Miss, you missed out.
Hi. I, I think just for the public that may be watching this afterward, I think what's really important about this ordinance is that this just is allowing T M P, Transportation Mobility and Parking, to put together a plan. And it really requires the public to really get involved and express what is important to them and how it's gonna work and how it's gonna function. Because every, again, every neighborhood's a little bit different and has different needs, so we really need everybody to reach out and get involved. It's really an amazingly positive step for the city right now. If somebody's parking in front of a fire hydrant, you could call, click it and ticket, or call the police, but they have a lot of other things to do. And this will allow them, you know, to come out and be the set of eyes to actually ticket people for that so that we're not using the time of our valuable police officers. So it's, it's a really positive thing. But again, everybody, please get involved and engaged with it. It shouldn't be something that after the fact, people are like, I didn't know.
And, 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 and I want to address that too. And, and I think whether or not people lend their voice to this, we know the right thing to do. And so if you only get a handful of people from District B or areas that are very impacted by this, to say that not enough people have, have lent their opinion to it holds us back. I think that that's something that we, as people who know the right thing to do, need to do that. And so we hope that everybody gets involved.
Further commentary, Mr. Seid?
To, to that point, I think that's why the committee really thought it was important that after the parking authority goes through this process, that it comes back to the council. Because a lot of times we're the ones that hear from it from the constituents directly about their concerns or frustrations. So after those two thirty-day periods and all of their deliberations, it will come back to the council. And this has been done before on different other programs. But I think that's why just like like Mrs. Dunn said, it's important that people know that it's, it's coming back to the council so that, so that the buck stops with elected officials. Like my friend, Councilwoman Nadaltski, Magna Rose.
It's one of my favorite things.
Other comment or discussion?
So again, I'm going to say what you said. I know that we're all here doing what we think is the right thing. But as someone who lives, and you all know, I'm gonna keep on this, right? So that it, it gets done. And I'm not saying that we haven't done the right thing. I've lived in that area, and some of you on this council have grown up in the area, but I've lived there for, since nineteen ninety. And I haven't seen much change in the way of, I've seen it get worse. And so what I'm just saying is that we need to be mindful of that, and I will be making sure that we keep our eye on how this transpires in, in our community, and particularly South Norwalk. And, and that's not to say that Jim Travers or, or the city has not done what they've needed to do, but to have lived in this condition for as long as I have, just it's overdue. It's overdue. And, and, and I don't want South Norwalk to be last on the list. We need to be prioritized, and that's what I'm saying. And I'm not saying that that's not going to happen. And that's not saying that the work that has been done by any committee hasn't been worth it. So.
With a comment or discussion, Ms. Smith?
Yeah, a, a few things. You know, one, just to address what's in front of us tonight. You know, I, this is something that residents have been asking for for quite a long time, and it really did take a, a lot of process, including changing a statute at the state level. That was part of what made it such a long time in coming. So you know, I, I really want to thank the ordinance committee, Jim Travers and your team for getting us to this point and engaging the public in continuing to move it forward. I would like to hear you talk about, Jim, though, you know, addressing some of Councilmember Young's concerns because, you know, I, you know, I, all of us are knocking on a lot of doors these days, right? And talking to our residents. And it has been a problem, as you say, in your district for such a long time, but the commercial vehicles on our streets, the abandoned vehicles on our streets, you know, it's a blight issue and it is a concern. And so Jim, I, you know, and you, you and I have talked about this, you know, off and on. So I'd just like to hear, like, you know, some of your thoughts on, on how we can proceed forward on, on these issues.
So I think a couple of things. I think it's somewhat upsetting to have comments be made that I don't put the things first, when in fact, I think the, the, the time that I've spent in, in Sono, in South Norwalk in particular, has been extensive in the, in, in, in the improvements that we've been moving forward. As it relates to commercial vehicles, there is a process, and there's a law for commercial vehicles. And when they're, when they're there, they're ticketed. You know, I think if there's a commercial vehicle, if somebody has a plumbing truck or a thing, that's, that's accommodation plate, and by law, it's not a commercial vehicle. So the, the city is very limited into what we can do if somebody has a truck. I think that we have to accept that. I mean, the, I, I, I can't do anything that the law doesn't allow us to do. I think it's a conversation that we have. I think the police department has been, you know, great. I think we have had a conversation with Chief Wal, Walsh, regarding abandoned vehicles. My last conversation with Chief Walsh is that he is, the, the police is the only one, the opportunity to remove them today. And then to date, he has removed over sixty abandoned vehicles on the streets. So I think that requires everyone to participate in the process and, you know, use, click it, and you, you put in a ticket to report a vehicle. It is then determined if it is, it's, it's red tagged and subsequently towed. So, so I think we do have a process. I think we all have to participate in that process to make it effective, right? I think this is, you, residential parking has been brought to my attention since the time that I've come here. I think there's some, you, I think when we look at Manresawiles, you know, the community that surrounds Manresawiles, you, in South Norwalk, you know, particularly, we're, we're, we're concerned. I think there's a number of people that raised, you know, public record to, to that. And then, and then I think it addresses this issue. I think it addresses the issue around train stations. I think it has to be a process that, that the residents in the particular area participate in to, to, to do it. I don't think it's one that the city should impose on particular neighborhoods. I think they, they have to participate and, and want it because it does potentially mean changes to, to how they operate. I think we will, I, I, we have driven this, right? So, you know, we are the one that petitioned the state to change legislation. We petitioned the council to change the ordinance to allow the parking authority citywide access so that we can then get to the process where we are today. And it's been a lengthy process, and I'm sure that residents are frustrated. You know, I think it is often very, I, I voiced this before, it's frustrating for residents when they see the, 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 you know, the gates of City Hall operate slow. We are, we're, we're doing what we could do to, to move them as fast as we can. This has been an issue that has been on the books for quite a long time. I think we, we, you know, we, we welcome dialogue to, to, to open up other things that I think, but this is just, this is just one process and a number of steps in order to, to get us here. And I think we continue to still get there. We opened up citywide enforcement to the parking authority to allow them the opportunity to, I think, you, it was, might have been Representative Dunn, Councilperson Dunn, who referenced, you know, somebody parked in front of a fire hydrant. That wasn't an issue that the parking authority could respond to just until recently, right? When we changed the legislation. So, so we're there. I think we need to get more people aware that that is now the opportunity for, for people to do it. But, you know, I can commit to you that this will be an open and transparent process, as everything we've done has been an open, transparent process. And that we will seek to as much community engagement. But, you know, the reality is, is with the residential parking zone But, you know, the reality is, is with the residential parking zone program, it's pretty consistent. And I think that we've talked about this in, uh, in committee a number of times. Um, there's only so many ways to skin a cat, right? We, we've done, uh, you're, we, we, we're doing a lot of research with how the program operates in other cities. Uh, you know, I think that, you know, we will look at, you know, what has been best practice, uh, move those forward as potential ideas, have conversations. Um, and you seek, you know, community input. Um, and then I think, you know, based on your comment that, you know, has, has two times that. Uh, two, two thirty-day periods that will do that. So I think, you know, I, I remain committed to, to doing that. And, um, I'm hopeful that we could, uh, finally be in a, be in a position to move this one forward.
Thank you, Jim. Um, and, you know, I just, just to add to, to that, you know, then I, I've heard from a lot of residents about the residential parking pass. And, um, you know, they, they express their frustration, right? But when you explain to them that first we had to go to the state and advocated the state to make that change and understand what our process is. They're really grateful, really grateful to hear, um, you know, even though it's frustrating to wait this long, uh, they're grateful. Um, that we're working on it and we're getting there. So thank you very much, Jim.
Ms. Ears?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Travers, you know, you're one of my favorites. Um, I did. You said something about imposing regulation on residents. And, um. That sits uncomfortable with me because we have to be very, um. Careful as well as smart to realize that many residents may complain. About a plethora of issues, but they don't know what the steps are to resolve the issues. So when I first heard it, I don't have, I didn't have an issue with it being residentially led. In retrospect, I think, and I know it's going to come back to the council. I think that the voices that are raised at any level of this process should be equally looked at. Because many of our constituents don't even realize that they have the right to public participation. It sounds ironic, but it's very true. So I just hope as you are framing this. I hope as you are doing your outreach, and I do, I know you do marvelous outreach at the neighborhood level. You do, and I, and I know you do, understand that some of our residents that are most, mostly impacted. Will not speak out because they don't know to speak out. Even if you send a flyer, even if you are saying, hey, they just, it, a lot of people have trouble connecting the dots. To getting the problems resolved in the city. So I just wanted to make that comment. That's not coming at you. You know, you might, you know, be hurt each other. But I, I think we just need to realize that sometimes people have a problem. And don't know how to solve their own problem. That's just the realistic nature of it all. Second, I think, um, and I, I know my colleague, Ms. She, colleague, Ms. Shannon, addressed it, this, but. Because this is a layered problem, this council, the next council, so council, needs to be realistic in understanding. That if we do not fund enforcement. A residential pass is a Band-Aid to a cancer sore. There has to be multiple things that are going to occur to address the larger issue that has manifested for decades. And I know my colleague, Ms. Young, spoke about, um, what she lives and what she sees in District B. But in District A, we have clusters, we, you know, District B is the urban core. All these words we say, it's a neighborhood. People live there. But in District A, we have the congestion, we have narrow streets, we have commercial vehicles. We, we have all the things. We check all the boxes. And I think we have to be realistic in knowing that. Ticket, click it and ticket is limited to people knowing what click it and ticket is. It's, it's, anything we do has limited, um, ability and is based on the efficiency of the person who's using the system. Regardless of what that system is. So if we begin to legislate in a way, we have these layer effects of approaching. The same, um, issue, I think it would help us get down to where we're supposed to go a lot faster. So this is not a critique. I mean, Mr. Travis, I would never do that because I think you do awesome work. I just would hope that you would look at this in different manners to make it more equitable for every voice to be heard. Not just those people who have a car and could come to a public participation or have access to join us online.
Thank you, Ms. Ears. Any further question or comment?
I'm not going to belabor it, but thank you very much. But, and, and I just want to say, Mr. Travers. I, 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 I hope you didn't think that this was something against you because you and I have had those conversations. You, you, you have, what we have walked in our community and knocked on doors together. So I commend the work that, that, that you've done. And I clearly understand this thing does not happen overnight, and I know that all those things, it's a process, and we've started that process. But what I want to stay top of mind for all of us is similar to what Ms. Ears has just said. That it is a layered process, but we shouldn't just kind of piecemeal this. And we need to put in all those other things so that we're moving this together. And so that it doesn't take another decade before something is actually done to, to, to positively impact.
Further comment or discussion? Okay, see none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Motion very unanimously.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Ms. Shannon. The time is, uh, eight forty-seven, all in favor. Opposed? Abstentions, we are adjourned at eight forty-seven. Thank you.